Dishonorable Mention is brought to you by 813area.com. 813area.com is the place to go to see where to go and what to do in all of Hillsborough County. Whether it's the best events, the newest restaurants, or where to be in Tampa Bay, 813area is your resource for everything happening around town. For the latest on where to be in 813, check out 813area.com. Dishonorable Mention is now on social media. Follow us on Facebook and we're at DishonorablePod on Twitter, too. Next week, we'll start taking questions from Twitter because y'all have been an amazing part of this. Thank you.
Due to Clearwater City Councilmen deserve a raise. Half the Democrats put together the right format for their first debates of the presidential campaign. What do we think about Affairs of the Heart? And who among the four of us are true Southerners? This and more on this episode of Dishonorable Mention with an introduction that is causing people to make funny faces. As always, I'm Ernest Hooper, columnist for the Tampa Bay Times. And I'm joined by Dr. Carla Mastrocchio.
If you could see my face right now, y'all.
I know. What did I say wrong?
Well, yeah, I don't even know.
Also, State Representative Chris LaValle.
Hey, good morning. How are y'all doing?
And Community Activist Becca Teeter.
Greetings and salutations.
Becca has a birthday party to get to today, so we will be skipping over these topics very quickly. Those that you don't like, that make you make faces like the one you're making right now? We won't spend too much time on, I promise. Let's start with the Clearwater City Council. I understand it brought together two of our podcast partners. Chris and Becca, tell us what happened this week.
I was just trying to be a good friend and I didn't know what the heck I got to.
Well, I think it's really interesting because as we've mentioned, I have the privilege and honor of serving on the Clearwater Charter Commission Review. And Chris and I often discuss the issues that come up there because, one, both as residents of Clearwater, we're invested in. Two, it's an interesting look at bureaucracy from my lens and he gets to laugh at me through the process. So it's very good for our symbiotic relationship. But I was talking to him about the fact that there was quite a few people who felt that our Congress, our congresspeople, our council people were underpaid. And so they pulled all this other data and they were talking about a pretty sizable increase. I would say about 40% was what was being spitballed around.
Some of them wanted more than double.
Right. And so I talked to Chris about it and Chris was like, now that's unprecedented and never gonna happen. So I fought really hard against it and then it came back up again on the agenda. So I told Chris and he showed up to show support for my belief that there was nothing worthy of a raise. We even looked at, and they brought all the data because the people are super smart. Like, and I compared us to cities of similar size and we are exactly right in the middle. There are nine that are higher paid, there are nine that are lower paid. So we're perfectly in the middle and that's based on size and council makeup.
So let me ask you a question. So, all right. So what is the income? Is it like $10,000 below the poverty line? Like what, because if you say some people want double and they're only making $10,000, I think they should get a living wage. So like, what's the, what are the numbers now?
Across the state, they range from eight grand to like 45 grand, depending on how much time they work, what the expectation is.
For a city the similar size of Clearwater.
Do they have other jobs?
Clearwater City Council makes $23,000. The mayor makes $26,000. It's a part-time job.
With full health benefits and they get some.
Every single one of them can have another job if they want to.
I'm so sorry. I'm laughing because I just realized this now, that it wasn't a full-time job.
No.
Well, I had no idea.
That are retired.
I had no idea.
But there's.
Did you know, whoop, did you know?
Some elected offices are defined as full-time jobs, others aren't. Hillsborough County Commission, they make in excess of $90,000 a year.
Yeah, because they're full-time.
Because that's defined as full-time.
That's really interesting.
Chris's job as a state representative is defined as part-time.
Yeah, I knew that, but I didn't know that.
Most school board positions are defined as part-time. Most city council positions are defined as part-time.
So, and in Clearwater, we have a weak mayor form of government, meaning the city manager makes the day-to-day decisions and executes the day-to-day policies of the city council.
That seems like a lot.
Mayor is a larger ceremonial position. And St. Petersburg, for instance, the mayor does, makes the day-to-day decisions. So the mayor, I believe in St. Petersburg, makes a six-figure salary or close to it.
I just think that's your sly way of calling the Clearwater mayor weak. I don't really think you're trying to define how their government works.
Well, that's the form of government.
It's a city manager form of government.
It is.
But you like saying weak mayor, don't you?
Well, no, and we had a referendum and, I mean, some mayor argued that he is weak. We had a referendum in November to have a strong mayor form of government in Clearwater. I strongly supported it. The voters of Clearwater disagreed with myself and others and resoundingly supported the idea of keeping the city manager form of government.
I really thought, yeah, I just, I'm confused.
You know, it's very disingenuous now for the, for people to say, oh, well, you know, now the city council, even though they don't make these day-to-day decisions and the mayor doesn't make the day-to-day decisions, now they deserve a raise.
Do you feel like you live in a Hallmark movie? Because I feel like this is kind of, you know, this is very cute. And I didn't realize that these people were not full-time. Like, I really thought it was like, I don't know, I really thought it was like a really big city with like, you know, full-time government. I think it's adorable if people work part-time. It's like a Hallmark movie.
It's a full-functioning city. And the devil's advocate, and I sit with some people who have some really interesting and important commentary about this, is their argument is if we paid them $50,000 or $60,000 a year, would we attract a more higher caliber of candidate? And/or would we get a more diverse pool of folks? Where somebody who might be a brilliant thought leader that makes X could leave their position to run for this office? Because there is a time, you must, while it may be defined as a part-time position, it definitely requires a very flexible schedule. If you have, a teacher could not do this job because you can't be like, I'm gonna be gone from nine to 10 on Mondays. So there is some definitive limitations. My argument and the reason I have a problem with it is, show me one piece of research, since we're right in the middle, show me one piece of research that shows that by paying more, you get a higher caliber of representation? Or more diverse representation?
Yeah, I would argue that the representation is not based on the salary of the position, but how much money the person can raise. And typically, the candidates who raise the most money are those who are already wealthy. So I don't know if I would buy into that.
I don't know at the local level if that's true. I really, I don't know, I don't know. But I think that if you're talking about raising salaries so people, you know, who are teachers, who want to get in local government and want to leave their teaching job because they feel like they have something to bring? I think that's a valid argument, but at the same time, it's like.
It does eliminate them from running. There's no doubt about that.
Yeah, it's definitely a barrier to entry, but I guess I can't wrap my head around the fact I didn't know this until right this moment. I feel really sheepish right now because I really thought Clearwater was a bigger city than I guess it is.
Well, it's about.
Not that it's a bad thing. I just think that I just thought it was a lot bigger.
But there's still a lot of people, and that's one of the things that we talked about last week, that there's still a lot of people that view it as a small town and they like to have the small-town feel.
You're basically a Hallmark movie and that's amazing.
But you know, Carla, I don't think the City of Tampa council representatives make much more than what they're talking about. I think their salary is, I want to say 38 or 40,000 a year. You know, only, the only position that I know of in my limited scope that pays well above a living wage is county commission.
Yeah.
And I think it's the same for Pinellas County Commission.
So again, it's not that I'm suddenly, you know, I was getting, a lot of my Democratic friends thought I was, you know, so terrible because I didn't want to just throw money into this till and make that, and support that suggestion. But it's twofold. Number one, I have no evidence that it will make a difference other than make, and number two, I also have no evidence, I'm not comfortable saying, let's pay a, and again, I use the term part-time. I realize they would argue that they work more than part-time. And since I've never held the position, I respectfully hear whatever they have to say. However, for a part-time position, I don't think they deserve more money for what they do than a teacher, a social worker, a childcare advocate, many journalists. I mean, I don't, I think we have to look at what the value is.
I think there's a third factor that you haven't brought up. Chris is rubbing off on you, isn't he? Chris is rubbing off on you.
You're definitely a fiscal conservative, for sure.
Very proud of Becca. When she was, she was, and you could tell at the meeting the other day that there was people there that wanted to run for city council and they were trying to push this idea. And there was even people on there that I could tell wanted to raise the salaries and they were more conservative ideologically than Becca was.
It's not that, do Chris and I have.
Quote-unquote, more conservative.
I don't think, I think it's just not the money that's well-spent. If I had a magic wand and I was the only, and I got to make the decisions, I would spend more money. But what I would spend it on is, I believe, instead of being a council of five, based on the research I've seen of the other councils that both surround our areas in our state, we'd be more advantageous as a council of seven, which again, employing two more people is a, has a cost factor. And I believe we should district four of our seats and we should make three at large, one of them being the mayor. I don't have a problem investing in my city's growth. I have a problem with giving somebody a 40% raise based on no evidence. I'll spend money on social programs that work. I'll spend money on government that makes lives better. I'm not throwing money into a black hole and setting it on fire just because somebody who has no imperial, any real knowledge on the factor thinks, well, maybe, I mean, that's why we end up in a hole and on so many issues.
Yeah, and 40% does sound exorbitant to me. I will say that.
And just for the record, y'all have gotten on to me before because I've made fun of AOC in Congress, Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez. And just this week, she came out in favor of Congress making, or getting a raise. And they make $175,000 a year. And she said that they should make a cost of living increase. And just for the record, the Florida legislature doesn't increase their own.
You don't get a COLA each year?
A COLA.
Like, it's the cost of living?
Cost of living adjustment.
I don't believe so. I know that we've lowered our salary before. I don't think, while I've been there, that we've raised it.
I don't know. I think it's a barrier entry for a lot of people, so.
And if I, if it could be proved to me that if we paid X, there's some research that shows we would get, that the political landscape would be more diverse based on that metric, then I would entertain it. But just a couple of us sitting around a table spitballing ideas does not make.
No, I am with you. I get it. I'm just saying, like, I think it logically makes sense to me that if you raise a salary, then you free up some really good people to be able to leave their jobs and run for office and contribute to public service. But I don't know that that's true. I just think that. There's no data that I've seen to back that up.
Well, and I look at St. Pete's leadership, which arguably, any of us who've been around for a while, which we have, we've seen how St. Pete has exploded and grown. Every member of St. Pete City Council that I know has a city. I believe that it can be done. It requires diligence, good management, and being a steward of your time.
Yeah, and I agree. And just about every single member of the legislature has another job that they come back home to.
I don't think it's a perfect system. I don't think we're gonna solve it today. But I think that giving a large raise to our council is not the entry point to changing the scope and future of Clearwater.
So, Becca, on the, on the city council, would you vote for a cost of living increase for yourself? Or would you keep it where it's at?
Well, they do a 3% cost of living increase. Pam was explaining it each year. Like, that's just built into the charter.
So are you announcing today that you're running for the city council?
I am not. I am not making that announcement.
What we do need to note, though, is that on the week of June 9th, 2019, Chris and Becca agreed on something.
Very proud moment.
It's a big day. It took a year and a half, but we got here.
So I'm a guy who always thinks he has brilliant ideas, even when I don't. So I want to share with you guys my latest brilliant idea. This week, the Democrats will have their first presidential debate. They're gonna have 10 candidates debate the first night, 10 candidates debate the second night. And they determine who would go first and who would go second by random draw. Interestingly, Joe Biden and Bernie Sanders will be on the second night along with Kamala Harris and Pete Buttigieg. Did I, did I get that right? Did I say his name correctly?
I think that's Becca's guy.
Buttigieg.
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 Bear Pete. And then that, that leaves some other candidates going the first night. I think what the Democrats should have done, in the spirit and pattern of the NCAA basketball tournament, is have a bracket and see the 20 candidates and have two face off against each other for like a week. And then each one, and the winning, you determine, you have a council that determine who the winner is and that winner advances into bracket.
You could do online voting, like tweet your votes.
Yes.
It would really engage the population.
I can tell you, you can take anything and put it in a bracket.
Yeah, no, this, this is brilliant. You line them up based on whatever the metrics are, you know, they're dollars or whatever, so it's.
Sure.
And then we.
So can I buy votes on Fiverr from like China to support my candidate? Because five bucks is gonna get me a lot.
I guess that might be possible. But I'm telling you, a bracket would be far more intriguing. You'd get a lot more people interested in it because the concept of the bracket is so simple. It's so visual. You can look at it and see who's matching up and then you try to anticipate.
I hear the rock. Yeah, the hackers that I hire are gonna be amazing at that because it's pretty easy to do.
Okay, okay, but you don't have, you don't, okay, don't do online voting. You just get a council of debate experts and political pundits to determine who the winner is.
Oh, so now you're gonna outsource that to experts that people don't trust anyway?
Party leadership?
Hey, there's no perfect science. It would be imperfect. It's just one debate. It's not the only thing we're gonna use to determine.
I'm pretty sure if I was put in a position where, I have done debate commentary before for like news and stuff like that. I'm pretty sure if I was put in a position, or any of us were put in a position where we determined the winner of a debate and we left the public out, that we'd get death threats and we probably would.
No, it happens in sports all the time. They determine who gets to play in the bowl championship series with a council of experts.
Yeah, and they screw UCF all the time, too.
Likely so.
I think there's creative ways you could do it. I think the voice has, you know, we could do it, you could do a save.
Can I have a big button?
I think there should be, you could have an app that whatever media outlet's doing it downloads and, you know, like, when somebody says something really smart, you push one button so it's like they get like thunderous applause from around the country. It could be.
So would it be like the final four with debate, like that night or the final six?
I mean, there's software that allows you to do that. I mean, there is software that allows you to kind of dial up. Frank Luntz does this all the time with his focus groups at his company. Every time someone says something that you like or don't like, in real time, they dial up and down for market research purposes. But I don't know that that's really quantifiable in determining a winner. I mean, it could be, but, you know.
This would just be one of several debates.
I love it.
This would be one format.
I think, I think just once, it would kind of be fun. It would be fun.
That high. We wouldn't, we wouldn't use this to determine who the nominee would be.
I guarantee you, it would completely change the energy of the.
Yes.
It would be fun. It would be fun. Like, you know.
And you'd have, you'd see them.
And you could see the tweets.
And so Joe Biden would have to go against, I don't know, the governor from Montana in the first round. And the governor of Montana might upset him like, like University of Maryland, Baltimore County beat Virginia last year. And even be awesome.
And then the Bernie people would still complain and it'd be wonderful.
When you apply, when you apply sports concepts to politics, I'm telling you, it works. It works.
You apply entertainment concepts to politics now and look what a cluster we're in now. So I'm not.
Say entertainment, I said sports.
Well, sports is entertainment.
No, it's different.
It's so not different. It's not. There's narratives, there's storylines, there's heroes, there's non-heroes.
Sports doesn't have anything like The Bachelorette, which is one of the worst shows in history.
Jesse Palmer actually was the Bachelor and now he's a ESPN guy, so. And then we have, and then Aaron Rodgers' brothers, you know, and Aaron Rodgers won The Bachelor. There's some overlap between sports entertainment, like a lot, so I'm not willing to say.
There might be overlap.
There's, they're different, but there's overlap, I'm sure.
Do you think that's part of the problem of the communication industry right now?
Of course.
Do you think that's what's really causing such an uproar?
Nobody knows what the hell they're doing. Like, honestly, people can pontificate all they want, but nobody knows what the hell they're doing. And if you really ask them deeper questions, you'll probably get that answer. The answer's probably gonna be, I don't really know. I mean, my colleagues would probably be mad at me for saying that, but, I mean.
That's why we need a bracket system for the president. Because I love these presidential debates and I'm like, what a snooze fest. 10 people on a stage?
Yeah, but there's too many people.
Too many people, not enough time. That's why if you had two people, 101.
Like that annoying guy Swalwell, there is no chance that that guy is gonna be anywhere near becoming President of the United States.
Why do you think he's annoying?
He has begun, did you see the video about him changing the diaper?
No.
Yeah, go, go, go look at his.
Give me the Reader Digest.
Campaign ad about changing a diaper and saying, you know, I clean up the crap, you know, for my kids so I can.
What, am I supposed to celebrate him because he has a penis that can clean and change a diaper? Is that, is that right?
Oh, he can clean up the crap in Washington.
Yeah, because he knows how to change a diaper.
I hate that analogy, by the way. That's.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
I'm so proud of you with your penis changing a diaper. Thanks so much. Like, that's really dumb.
I mean, he's just so annoying.
I think that's a form of toxic masculinity that's, it kind of, you know, seeps through into those kind of ads. Like, I'm supposed to be excited. If a woman had that ad, it would just be completely different.
Right.
Completely different. And I think that's, I'm offended by that. I didn't see it, I'm offended.
According to Becca, I have all sorts of male privilege, but women that.
You kind of do.
Women that run for office change diapers all the time and they don't go make campaign ads.
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah.
And that's just what.
Yeah, privilege for the win. Man, that's, yeah, no, no. I haven't even seen that and I don't.
Do you watch The Bachelor?
Yeah, I do. I have bachelor parties every week with my friends.
I've never watched it.
Do you watch Married at First Sight?
Um, so I haven't watched this season of The Bachelorette. My friends have bachelorette parties every week and we have a theme party and we have, it's really fun. It's very social. I haven't gone to any this season.
Twisted Reason. This is what I discovered this week. So Married at First Sight is just what it sounds like. They profile, they do profiles of different single people. They match up people who they think can work and then they meet each other at the wedding ceremony.
I've seen it.
The first sign the groom sees the bride is when she's walking down the aisle. And then they spend, I don't know, six weeks trying to see if it can actually work. So two seasons or season seven or whatever, there was this guy who I thought was kind of cool and this woman was just not into him. And it didn't work. And so on Married at First Sight, they have three marriage counselors who try to help the couples work through their issues. This guy, who could not connect with the woman he was paired with, ended up engaged to one of the counselors.
Well, that's messed up on so many levels.
I know.
Oh my God.
So the counselor.
That is such a betrayal of, oh my God.
The couple and she was eyeing him and saying.
That's not cool. No.
It's not gonna work. You guys aren't gonna work. Hey, hey, Joe, call me later.
This must be a later season.
That is messed up. Did she lose her license? Because I kind of feel like.
She's no longer on the show.
I kind of feel like.
Do you know which one?
Uh, I think her name is Jessica Griffin, I think is her.
Was the therapist?
Yes.
Because I was just checking, because I have a friend who was a therapist on the show and I wanted to make sure.
I can send you the link.
Does she have any boyfriend? Because.
She's, her name's Logan, Dr. Logan.
I think that's ethically not okay. I mean, I'm not.
Not okay at all.
I'm, I mean.
And Lifetime has it on the site, though. Like, they're bragging about it.
Lifetime needs to check themselves. That's not cool.
Make a match here, but guess what?
I'm surprised I didn't hear about that. That's really.
I'll send you the link. It's a hoot.
That might be worse than Ari dumping Becca for Lauren.
Well, that was pretty bad.
That was pretty bad. Yeah. They just had a baby, though, so I'm happy about that.
Uh, okay, on our other great topics, we also wanted to talk about, oh, this stuff tells nicely. I call it Affairs of the Heart. I'm not sure.
Oh my God, this is so, yeah.
Communication specialist, can you give me the right terminology for what we're going to talk about?
So I'm gonna pull it up now and let me see, hold on.
Guess it's not Affairs of the Heart, although I think it kind of is.
It's like, it's, all right. So we're talking about a news story that was posted on the 14th titled, "World War II Veteran Reunites With Long-Lost French Love Seventy-Five Years Later." So this guy had a lot of memories from World War II, some good, some bad. I'm sure a lot of bad. Uh, he was in France and he met a woman with a couple of kids, fell in love, came back to the United States. And he says, after I left, and he was like, Natalie in love with this woman. And he goes, after I left, she thought I was coming back. She waited for me for five years to come back, said, and the guy's name is Robbins. But he never did. Life got in the way. After the war, Robbins returned home to Memphis, went to Ole Miss and married his wife Lillian and bought a hardware store. We had a good life together. We were married 70 years, but this other thing was still in my heart, said Robbins. A group called Forever Young Veterans heard about Robbins' story and wanted to help him return to France for the 75th anniversary of D-Day. But they were also able to help him get back to his first love. Robbins and, I don't know how to pronounce this woman's last name, Garnier, spent two hours together at the nursing home where she now lives. Garnier eventually got married as well.
I'm gonna pour some out for him that it was two hours. Good for him.
But neither of them got over their first love. Greatest day of my life, I reckon. I mean, it was great, said Robbins. And we're supposed to be excited for this? I'm confused. Because you explained to me how home guy, like, you know, leaves her, doesn't come back. She waited for five years for him. Seventy-five years later, he like waltzes in to her nursing home and he's like, hey, baby. I'd be like, no, GTFO. No, you didn't come back five years ago. Am I supposed to swoon? No. Bye-bye.
And what do his kids think?
What's your concept of forgiveness, Carla?
You walk out on me in France during World War II? I wait for your ass for five years and you come back 75 years later? You can take that forgiveness and you can shove it up your ass.
Okay, I don't think it's, my problem isn't the fact that I didn't come back. My problem is the fact that like now there's wife's daddy's like, okay, here's the real deal.
Greatest day of my life, I come up.
But really, you know, thank God, I thought, I didn't think Lillian would hang on this long. But now that she's gone, woo, I can get back to my lady that I've been really trying to get with.
And have the greatest day of my life. Like, maybe your kids' birthdays, birth of your children, your wedding day, like meeting your wife.
Nope, nope.
I get the feeling that this is a podcast minefield for Chris and I. And we should just like drop out and let you two keep going. Because I feel like anything I say, I'm gonna step on it.
The commenters are like, yeah, how do you feel? Because I feel like the commenters on Facebook are like, it's such a lovely love story. If you don't like it, you don't know true love. It's like, hmm, maybe you don't know reality because poor Lillian.
The greatest day of some people's lives, mid-'80s, Gainesville, Florida.
After your wife dies.
Friday, Saturday night, hot tub. Stars, you know, in the sky.
I don't know who you're referring to.
Light in the background.
Oh.
I'm gonna issue a Florida.
I'm pretty sure if he walks into the 85 years, he's gonna be like, I'm sorry, who are you?
I think what we're taught or fed is true love and romance is just not that. It's a, it's a quickie commercial of absolute saccharine. Good, beautiful relationships are built in the moments that we, that are hard. Everything's easy. It's why Titanic is such a scam.
Titanic is like the worst, man. So bad, y'all. I can't even.
I love watching the movie. I love to cry, but if I look at it critically, this woman built a life with someone else in 36 hours with Jack, who PS she let drown. She was like, slide over, brother. Freeze out, you know, I'll never.
She didn't share her wrath.
Right. She's like, I'll never let go, Jack. Could you, could you take it a little to the left? Plunk, 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 plunk.
Even gave her his whistle.
He did. He even gave her his whistle.
And then like she's with, you know, builds this whole life.
Grandchildren, children.
And then as she sits on her deathbed, she's thinking of Jack, closes her eyes, and who does she rush to meet in those heaven's gates? Oh, it's Jack.
Good girl, you met for three days.
Poor Lillian and her ex-husband are sitting there crying going, well, glad I wasted 50 years of my life.
She got some D for three days and now she's like pining over this guy for her whole life? Like, I don't think so.
No one in my past that I'm gonna be looking for in 50 years from now, I guarantee.
I think it's called carrying a torch. Is it impossible to have a longtime committed marriage and still have a little piece of your heart that belongs to someone else? Is that, is that, can that be justified? Is it wrong?
But they shouldn't trump your entire existence and the life and story that you built.
Well, I, I wouldn't have said this is the greatest.
You shouldn't be running, running to them as you die. Like, I think that's not right.
Right.
Because it is disrespectful to the life you built with someone else. And if you didn't want to build that life with someone else, then don't do it. Then find someone you like better, you know, but.
Can you look them up on Facebook?
Can I look who up on Facebook?
The, the, the long-lost love.
Well, we've been on Facebook groups looking.
We can't even find a name. You think we can look up a long-lost love from World War II?
Do I think it's wrong?
You can't run to them, but like, like, what are the boundaries?
Oh, I think big friends on Facebook is fine. Yeah.
I'm asking, okay.
I mean, don't like start sending photos of your downtown region. That would be probably frowned upon.
That would be, that would be surprising.
If you want to like chat it up, like talk about old school, find out what's going on. Generally, what happens is you find out, oh, now I remember why I broke up.
Exactly.
But.
Now I remember why I chose the bunk bed.
The bunk. By the way, I went on a cruise last weekend. That's why I wasn't on the show. By the way, I went on a cruise last weekend. That's why I wasn't on the show.
Did you have bunk beds?
I did not have bunk beds, but I wish I had because my room was so small, I wanted to cry. And I thought about you. I was like, damn.
Wouldn't you have wanted?
We would have got a suite with a nice room and not what I had because what I had was not that. No.
That's what we had.
No.
You know, the.
When we do the Dishonorable Mention podcast cruise, we'll, we'll get the nice.
Carla and I will have really nice rooms. We'll put Chris in a room with a toddler bed.
Y'all do the bunk bed.
Well, I'll be bunking with Gavin DeGraw on the Dishonorable Mention.
I would, hey, Gavin DeGraw, Matt Nakason Cruise, I'm all about that. Let's do it.
I was going to ask, what about, we mentioned Titanic. Did any of you see Bridges of Madison County?
Yeah, of course.
When I was like.
Tell me how that fits into this.
Well, I think it's the same trope though, but it's the same trope of the woman torn between two men and men drive the story. Men are the plot points that drive her journey. So it's typical, I mean, typical patriarchal story.
That movie, wouldn't you say that movie appeals to women more than men?
Of course, designed for women. It's designed to feed into this fantasy of, I could talk about this all day. It's just, it's not a, it's, it's fine for a movie, but it's not fine in terms of the broader narrative that it represents and what it does culturally. Because that trope of the bored, lonely housewife who gets excitement from some like new hot thing coming into town is to take her away from this life. It's the man that takes her away, the man that provides fantasy and excitement instead of her going out and like living her life and doing her own thing. So.
Women should realize all you need is Calgon to take you away. You don't really need a, a man.
You, you know, there are a lot of things that could take you away. There's like, you know, education, there's travel, degrees, like friends. I mean, I think.
European Wax Center.
European Wax Center. There's a lot of things that could, you know, enable you to have a better life than you actually have. So the idea that men provide that and men are the catalyst for a better life, I think is a narrative that we've seen over and over and over again. Pretty much is the beginning of time.
And you know what? We can tie European Wax Center to that and let me tell you how. So my friend Joanne used to work there and she is the waxer of all waxers. Like, there is no one better. Anyways, but she would tell me that a lot of times what would happen when people would come, especially younger women, their male partners would escort them and he would tell her how she would like to be grown.
That doesn't surprise me. That doesn't surprise me at all. No.
But it makes me sad.
It makes me sad. It does, but you know.
You talk about a reason for breaking up with somebody.
You know something? I know a guy.
Tell any woman, no, no.
I know a guy who got his.
No one tells me what to do with my nether region. Nobody.
I know a guy that we all know that got his girlfriend, he's married now. I went to his wedding. He's lovely. But, um, got his girlfriend a gift certificate to a wax center for Christmas. Several girlfriends later, probably like a hundred later, he got the other girlfriend a closet organizer and a gym membership. And I'm like, I see a pattern here. Not surprisingly, she dumped his ass. So, I mean.
Producer.
Yeah, that, that sounds like you're talking about Colin.
He's not Colin. I don't, no, Colin, I don't think Colin would do that. I don't, I don't think Colin would. I don't think, Colin, come here for a second. Come here. I don't think.
Did you buy somebody a gift card to the European Wax Center?
A guy that we hang out with a lot, used to hang out a lot, he moved, got his girlfriend a gift certificate to Wax Center. And then, and then a couple girlfriends later, he got her gift card to California Closets, to Closet Organizer and a gym membership because clearly, you know, she needed to work on those areas. Would you ever do that? I say no. What would you do?
I would not do one in three, but I would do two as for the California closets. In fact.
Oh, that's right. I totally forgot. I walked onto that one. Yeah.
Totally walked in that.
I did.
As you know, uh.
Yeah.
Certain past acquaintance of mine.
Conversation.
It is a triggering cup. Yeah. It is triggering.
But I would never do number one.
Well, I think if somebody, I think if somebody is really, really messy and you feel like, okay, I can't live in the space because of these habits, wanting to work together on, you know, would you like a closet organizer? Because this would make me feel really comfortable. Having that conversation, I think it's fine. Just giving someone a gift card like eh eh is just kind of rude, I think.
Well, that's called communication.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's communication. You're, you're right.
And the Brazilian is making a big comeback or making a big appearance. I'm understanding from my insider in the wax industry, Joanne tells me that the bros are getting, I mean, like, and I've learned that there's hair in certain places that I didn't even realize it was hair.
Yeah, it's, um, that is something that, I mean, the, the whole hair and waxing debate has been, and you know this, it's been in, you know, circles for a long time debating on whether or not, like, why do people do it? You shouldn't do it for men, you shouldn't do it, you know?
Considered an American thing, correct? Isn't it less popular in Europe? Did I have that right?
I don't think, I don't know. Um.
I know it is called European Wax.
Yeah, I don't. I can't speak for that now. I could have spoken for that eight, 20 years ago, but not now. I don't know. I don't know the trends. I don't really know. Yeah. Yeah.
And I, I'm always surprised that there's still, the wax centers are still so successful with the onslaught of laser.
Laser hurts like a, laser hurts. I have never tried it, but I know friends that have and they're like, don't do it. It hurts so bad. Sorry, Ili Minshew. You'll never be a sponsor.
So Colin, when you put the segment together, I need you to get Amy Grant's "I Will Remember You" and have it playing underneath the whole talk about long lost loves.
First of all, that's Sarah McLachlan and, um.
No, 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 no. That you, there's two songs called "I Will Remember You."
Oh, there is? There's another one by Amy Grant?
Yes.
Okay. So I misspelled, actually, I'm, as a new Canadian, I should have done this. I misspelled Sarah McLachlan's name on Twitter when she did, uh, O Canada for game six of the NBA finals. And a fellow Canadian, a half, actually a full Canadian, I'm only half, said, uh, said I have lost my, half of my citizenship for misspelling her name, so.
So I drove with my husband to.
Fran the man.
Uh, I drove with Fran the man to, I forgot where we were going. I want to say it was like Tallahassee or something. Um, and I played the entire Lilith Fair Greatest Hits. And it was amazing. And I was like, can I?
Married?
No, I was like, can I please do this? And he was like.
His nickname, friend.
No, and I was like, can I please do this? He's like, I don't care what you do. Like, alright. I rocked out to Lilith Fair Greatest Hits for like probably an hour and a half and it was amazing.
You need to hold on to him.
He's pretty great.
That's a rare quality right there.
He's never heard them before. And he was like, who is this Sarah person? I'm very confused, but cool.
You would have, you would have got dropped off at the Busy Bee if I was dropping.
So I'm, I'm not gonna lie, that old Lilith Fair stuff, like you go back and play it back.
It's a mystery. Come on.
It's really good. It's really, it holds up.
Yeah, it really does. Rent, apparently Rebecca does not hold up.
Rent does not hold up.
That, totally rent, rent holds up. It's about income and wage discrepancy and disparity in America. It's about class, it's about gender. It's about like sex and public health.
Whiny, whiny kids. Um.
You are a monster.
No, it's true. And, and it doesn't hold up as well musically. I would say that the themes of it absolutely were ahead of its time. But musically, like, I, I'll take the Lilith.
It's one of the greatest.
Yeah, but I want Seasons of Love played at my funeral. Y'all make sure that happens. I don't care what my wife says. You guys make sure that happens, okay? You call the people at the Tampa Bay Master Corral, you have them come in and you have them sing Seasons of Love at my funeral.
Do you think Denise will be there?
If you're a fan of Dishonorable Mention, make sure to also check out Ralph the Lawyer Podcast here on the 813 Area Podcast Network. Starring a second generation Tampa attorney, Ralph Guido makes the law easy and accessible for people as well as anything but boring. With a menagerie of guests and his staff, Ralph and friends talk about everything from employment issues for women to whether or not you should cooperate with the police during a DUI check. It starts about the law, but it's way more fun and interesting than a statute book. Subscribe in iTunes, Stitcher, or wherever else you get your podcasts.
No, I don't.
She's gonna solo. She's like.
There you are. We're going to discover that Denise doesn't even remember me. But anyway, speaking of Southern bells and Southern culture, let's talk about a meme that we came across this week.
Y'all have to bring this up, don't you?
Uh, well, I liked it. It, it said, how southern are you? And you got a point for every food that you've eaten on the list.
Well, here's the thing. I think I'm real, I mean, I'm really southern. I'm fifth generation Floridian. Um, I really, I really embrace my southern heritage. I really enjoy being southern and I think that I'm, I'm really proud of, you know, being from here. I really love that. But I don't think, just because I've had red beans and rice once and I got a point for it, that that really constitutes, you know what I mean? Like, I don't know, I should be like, what foods are in your normal diet? What foods did you grow up with? What foods are you familiar with? Not just what foods did you have like one time? Because there's a lot of foods on there that aren't, that are very southern that aren't on that list. So I'm confused on, they really didn't, I really don't feel like it was like the best list.
It makes me think of, uh, Baby Got Back.
Like, I love red beans and rice. It's great, but I don't really, I don't think that just because I eat, eaten it a lot, when I, you know, I just don't think that makes it, I don't know.
Though is that you define yourself as a southerner because, uh, here in Florida in particular.
Oh, here we go. I can tell.
And central and south Florida, you know, we, we don't seem to have the same.
That's because all those damn Yankees from up north come.
Might find in Alabama or Georgia or Tennessee.
Yeah, that's because, uh, that culture is just.
You are to the south.
Mm-hmm.
That is very true.
That highway that brought him here can bring him right back up.
That, I thought I was gonna come in second place amongst the four of us and I think I came in third, maybe even fourth.
Don't have a really, maybe you just don't like the, that food.
What was your score, Carl? Do you remember?
Thirty-one.
Yeah, I was nineteen, I had nineteen.
I was twenty, I was twenty-five.
But you might be like a finicky eater.
Record to reflect that I said Carla was gonna win from the beginning.
But you might be a finicky eater. I love food.
Do I look like a finicky eater?
You do not.
You do not. But you could have, you know, you could, I'm just saying, like, it just, it depends on what you like to eat. Your, your diet could consist of, you know, grits and hamburgers your entire life. Or you could be a little more adventurous with your food. So I think that, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm all about being adventurous with your food. I'm not eating souse. I didn't even know what souse was.
Yeah, I didn't.
Then I looked it up. What is souse?
It's the jail brain of a cow or pig.
Yeah, I mean, I've never, I've never eaten that. I've seen it. I'm like, that's nice, whatever. But I mean, a lot of these foods were around because people were really poor and they didn't have a lot of resources for food. So they developed these things over time. So.
You know, I appreciate your historical and cultural respect regarding that. I'm sorry.
It's so gross, but you know.
It's gross.
But I'm also privileged enough where I didn't have to eat it. Yeah.
I'm privileged too, but we ate chitlins every New Year's Day.
Chitlins are good. I like chitlins. Chitlins are good.
Oh my God.
I will tell you my favorite thing from the lesson, and many people know I've been a vegetarian my, almost my entire life. So I was taken out of a lot of these things because of that. Like I've eaten grits and spades, but I haven't eaten shrimp and grits. But I, um, fried bologna was like my favorite thing.
My mother loves that. I think it's disgusting. Oh my God, that's so gross. God, that's gross.
Dude, I love some, you know, I might go out and get some bologna today and fry it up, man.
Loved it as a kid.
I love some fry, yeah. When I was a kid, fried bologna, man. Little pat of butter in the pan. Yeah, man.
And a tomato sandwich on there?
And it curls all up.
Tomato sandwiches. Those are my favorite things. Uh, with white bread, not wheat.
Yeah, we're not animals.
Hellmann's or Duke's? What do you think?
Hellmann's.
I like Hellmann's with olive oil over Duke's, but if it has to be between Hellmann's and Duke's, I'll choose Duke's.
Can I just say something that's highly controversial?
Oh no.
I like Miracle Whip.
You're basically a monster.
That is highly controversial.
Well, Miracle Whip's not really mayonnaise though. It's a, uh, it's a, it's a salad dressing. Miracle Whip's not really mayonnaise. It's packaged as mayonnaise. It's sold as mayonnaise, but it's not, it's not mayonnaise. It's salad dressing that's like in disguise.
It's so tangy and delicious.
Oh, absolutely.
I used to hate mayonnaise.
Only got a nineteen on the southern food list.
Anymore. I used to hate mayonnaise.
As my friend Tracy Johnson from, uh, Alabama said.
You were gonna say Denise.
This entire list could have been based on mayonnaise based products, man. Mayonnaise is a southern staple all to itself.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with mayonnaise, but I do love that Tango Miracle Whip.
I, I'm surprised that like corn on the cob wasn't on there, like the, you know, with, with sugar and, you know what I mean?
That were missing.
And red velvet cake, um.
Moon pies.
Moon pies. What else wasn't on there?
Crystal burgers.
Yeah, but that's, yeah, okay, crystal burger, sure. Um.
And, and, and my friend Tracy says Kool-Aid pickles should have been on there.
Hardee's wasn't on there.
Salted, people in the south put salt on their watermelon.
I think a lot of people salt. I don't think it's a southern thing, is it?
I think that's southern.
I don't like salt on my watermelon, but I can appreciate it.
I had never heard of Kool-Aid pickles. Apparently you put the Kool-Aid in with the pickle juice and then you pour it back over the pickles and you let it sit for a week and then you eat the pickles.
I would try it.
Yeah, I would try it. And I've seen it, you know.
Sounds good, but I just, I'd never heard of it.
I've seen it on Pinterest. I haven't really tried it.
And I would also try, I've eaten pickled watermelon rind. I like that.
I like the watermelon rind a lot. Moonshine wasn't on there.
Fried okra wasn't on there.
Have you had pickled pigs feet?
I'm not sure. I think I've given it to myself as a child. I know my brothers had it, but I don't.
So gross.
I was, but.
I don't think it's that bad.
They look like, come on, they look like embryos. Ugh.
Like embryos?
Yeah, when they're sitting in the jar and it can be.
I don't think they look like, I think they look like baby fruit.
What about those eggs that are just sitting in there? Those pickled eggs?
Oh, I like the pickle deck. What's wrong with you people? I like the pickle deck.
That is freaks me out.
See, all this time, I just, uh, Carla was just, you know, the South Tampa girl and.
Yeah, that's what we eat. Not all the time, but I mean, that's.
And all that.
I am a yuppie. I'm pretty basic. I'm pretty basic.
Yeah, she's a Florida cracker and I.
And a Florida cracker, yeah.
I'm with you. I'm a little surprised she scored the highest.
I'm, I'm part Florida cracker and part Spanish and Italian from New York City. So that makes, you know what I mean? Like that's my family. So I can't, I mean, that's not.
Carla is probably the most flexible and open to life's experiences out of all of us. So she'd be like, sure, I'll try it.
Yeah, cause I'm not eating souse.
All of us have a lot more trepidation.
I won't eat an insect, but I'll eat everything else. I don't like the insect thing. It freaks me out. It freaks me out. It freaks me out. I can't do, I can't, can't. And bananas. I don't eat bananas. Or bread. I don't like bread. I'll try it, but I like bread or bananas.
Thirty-two?
Yeah, twenty-one, thirty-one.
That's impressive.
It's not that, I mean, if you grow up here, it's not that hard.
Like, I, I didn't accept fatback as one of mine, but I know I've eaten stuff that's cooked with fatback before.
Then you eating fatback. Let's see, then you get a point. Like, it's not saying you're eating it every day. You're not like rubbing it all over yourself, but you know.
All I know is the Fatback Band, which is a popular R and B group in the late seventies. Yeah, they, they were pretty.
Can they do our theme song?
I think it's funny that this is the fake southerner who has a fake southern accent is.
Oh, that is nonsense.
Oh, ladies.
That is so wrong.
Gosh darn phone the thing you've been talking about.
You can't get more southerner.
That's pretty wrong. Yeah, that's pretty.
Except for the Panhandle in Florida than Jacksonville.
Yeah, I see Chris in the mirror practicing his, his jaw.
With a fake accent like she does.
You're Little Hillary. That's your new nickname.
No.
Little Hillary Ohio. Little hell, little hell. Well, that could be, that could be a rap song. Like Little Hell, that's my rap song. No?
Ernest Cooper, what else do we need to talk about this week?
She's like, cause I got to go.
Ty's put together a list of what makes you truly a Floridian.
Oh, here we go.
In between doing their strip club series.
Oh, I cannot believe that.
It was two stories.
I cannot believe that.
You know what I think's interesting is on an average week, how many stories does your paper write?
A lot.
Guest estimate. I realize there could be.
Three hundred.
So out of three hundred stories, the only two that Chris can reference are related to the adult entertainment industry.
They were on front page of TampaBay.com all week.
Uh-huh. Did you go beyond the front page?
I can't help that I'm a subscriber, online subscriber to TampaBay.com.
What else did you read?
Say, what else did you subscribe to?
What else did you read?
Best, best deal in town.
It's not ninety-nine cents a month. It's your first month.
Well, yeah, the first month. Yeah, what is it, the second month? I'm gonna get dinged. My credit card's about to get dinged here.
Yeah, it's eight dollars. But listen, what, what else did you read beyond the front page?
The sports, the metro.
Well, and you, and you read this list that my colleague Allison Gray put together.
This list.
Oh, Becca, how many of these Florida things have you experienced? Seen an alligator?
Yes.
Car covered in love bugs?
Yes.
Theme park annual pass?
It's a ten yes.
Spotted a giant cockroach?
Yes.
Love public subs?
Yes.
Why was there a pause? Why would you ever pause?
Yes.
Yes.
Cuban sandwich aficionado?
I don't know if I'm an aficionado.
Yes!
I'm an aficionado.
Uh, yes, yes. Moving on.
Orange juice is your favorite.
Without the.
I don't like orange juice. I don't like it. I like mimosas. Does that count?
Your Florida cracker status is down.
It does, because you know why? I don't love citrus that much. I really don't. It's a little bit too, it's a little too.
I love fresh squeezed orange, but I don't love it more than I love coffee. It's your favorite. It's not my favorite beverage.
Yeah, it's not my favorite.
Well, we could find a cure to diabetes. I drink a half a gallon every day. I once did, as a matter of fact. I love orange juice.
I enjoy it, but it is not my favorite beverage.
Yeah, I don't like, hate it. I just, you know.
Spotted a manatee?
Yeah, of course.
Waited out a ten-minute rainstorm.
Of course.
These, these questions are just like, are you really, are you for real?
Hey, hey, don't criticize Allison. She's really nice.
She's, I love you, Allison. You're great. Thanks.
Shatter her candy.
Yes.
Eating fried seafood.
Yes.
Never seen snow.
Okay, that's not, I think you're, I think that's really stupid. No offense, Allison, love you. That's really dumb, because you're saying that, like, somebody's not leaving, so you're basically making them place found, which is.
Just gonna let Allison listen to the podcast.
Socioeconomic argument, I think, and that's, I don't have a problem with that.
List.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't like never seen.
Maybe not seeing snow until you were a certain age. That might be, be a qualifier, but.
So I saw that list, and I had twenty-four, twenty-six, and the only two that I didn't was because I grew up in Philadelphia. Yeah, I grew up in Philadelphia, where I had a basement and saw snow all the time. That's the only way I was, but otherwise, I was perfect for it.
It's what we call a talker into business. It's not supposed to be a hundred percent accurate. It's supposed to spur conversations.
And I think it is. What else did we finish?
No.
Uh, no. Put my glasses back on. Drink at a tiki bar.
Yeah?
No Cuban bread is a science.
Yes, that is true.
Got in a Disney dough whip.
No.
Yes.
Of course.
Yeah.
Of course, Carla. We gotta get you over the haircut. Uh, roll your eyes at snowbirds.
Yes.
I try to show empathy, but.
They need to leave.
It doesn't always happen.
Used to hot summers.
Yes.
Yeah.
Wore a parka when it's seventy degrees.
No, but I, I run hot.
Yeah, you do.
Citrus tree in your backyard.
Yes. I got, you know, I'll tell you a story about this. I got, when I was in third grade or second grade, I got all A's in my report card, and my parents were like, what do you want? And I was like, I want an orange tree. So we went to the nursery, and we picked out an orange tree for me, and they planted it in the yard, and it grew.
That's cool. Chip wouldn't let me have one, because he says it costs.
You're like, cool story. You might get rats.
No, I think it's great. I wanted some fruit trees. I wanted an avocado tree.
Oh, I want an avocado tree.
Chip is really rating on my parade.
My first house was built in an old orange grove, and we had.
Yeah.
Uh, we had three orange, uh, trees in our, in our backyard.
Speaking of your old house, did you see that the governor signed yet another, uh, execution warrant?
I did not see that, but.
We're turning the tux over here.
Bowls, right?
Yeah, Gary.
Oh, it was for him?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, well.
Eating a Plant City strawberry?
Yes.
Yes.
You guys been to the Strawberry Festival?
Yes.
Of course.
Yes.
Heartbreak City for me.
Begrudgingly. Chip, Chip loves it.
Is this where you broke up with the bunk bed girl?
No, I've been in love twice. One of the times, I took the girl to Strawberry Festival.
Aw, Chris.
How did this one break up with you?
No, well, she moved up more.
She's like, what'd you do? Go to pick her up? And they were like, there's a pot outside.
Had a seagull steal your lunch?
Yes.
Never had a basement?
Yeah.
I've never had a basement.
You never had a basement. But you know a Florida room?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, my friend in Miami had the coolest Florida room in the world. Terrazzo floor and everything.
We had a cool one in my house, Corinna.
Love cafe con leche?
Of course.
Yes.
Worn a Hawaiian shirt?
Yes.
Unironically.
Of course.
Yeah.
No.
We have aloha Fridays at work.
I've had, like, a Hawaiian print dress, but I feel like.
That's the same thing.
Okay, well, then I get.
I got an early Father's Day gift, and it's an Hawaiian shirt.
Well, that's nice.
Yeah, happy, uh, early Father's Day, herbs.
I, I, you know, I tried to get, um, the timing was off. I really wanted to get one of my sons to come and join us today. Yeah, you think I got stories? They got stories.
They got stories.
They got stories. Okay, I think that covers all of our topics. Chris, can you tell us our Florida man story for this week?
And we're getting good as a state, and I'm getting proud of us, because just like last week, there are two Florida man stories, so we get to pick. The first one.
He's a true lover of democracy for us.
Yeah, the first one's not very good, in my opinion. It's from Big Cop at Key, which I had never heard of. Deputy Florida man chugged can of beer during DUI stop. I feel like that's not a very good Florida man story.
Had no witness. They had no evidence, because he got rid of it.
Yeah, but you, that's what you do. Didn't you see that episode of The Practice where the guy chugs the whiskey after he got in an accident, so they couldn't breathalyze him and say that the breathalyzer was point whatever because of something that occurred before the accident? That's like more strategy, I think, than it is.
So this Florida man is a genius, is what you're saying?
He's, he's definitely resourceful.
Yeah, he wasn't driving under the influence. The alcohol he consumed occurred after the police pulled him over.
Yeah.
And the other Florida man's story was also a year ago today.
Oh, lucky us.
And this one is from Pensacola, related to the waterways. Florida man attempts kayak escape, charged with boating under the influence.
Do you think you should get arrested for boating under the influence?
Yes, absolutely. One hundred percent. If you're a danger to yourself or others, yeah, absolutely.
If you drown, you drown. That's your fault. But, I mean, what are you gonna do? Plow into somebody with a kayak?
You could, and you could divert a boat, and the boat could die, boat could hit something and someone could die. Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Then I stand corrected. I just was like, are we getting a little out of whack here?
Or a danger to yourself or others, then yes.
So this week is the twenty-fifth anniversary of a big cultural event that dealt with sports, the entertainment industry, and true crime that's near and dear to Kyle's.
First kiss.
Did you guys mispronounce my name?
I said Carla.
No, you didn't.
You just called her Kylie.
You did.
Carla, Carla. I said Carla.
You haven't even had anything to drink.
I was gonna be like, what's that, like, air?
I had my tonsils taken out a few years ago, so sometimes I slurp.
That is no, really?
Carla.
Okay, how many of us have tonsils?
Seriously, that helps you slur speech? I don't think that.
No, occasionally, Carla.
I don't think that's a thing.
And I know her name is not Kylie.
So twenty-five years ago this week, in California, white Bronco chased on the highway.
Well, that's right. So sad. So, so sad.
In related news, guess who is now on Twitter? Aronthal James Simpson.
He's such a dick.
Yeah.
Oh, I know. I feel bad for his children. His children, see, I mean, they're, it is just so sad. I mean, he's just such a terrible person, so.
Um, because of the work in anti-violence that I do, I'm friends with Nicole Brown Simpson's sister.
She seems amazing, and she does the podcast. Yeah, that deep podcast, yeah.
I saw, I saw it on the Today Show this week.
Yeah.
So that's, that's, that's an American, that's an American tragedy we will never.
What kind of question is that?
Heal from.
What, so you're, you're in for guilty?
Have you been living under a rock the last twenty-five years? Yes, of course. I mean.
But the glove didn't fit. What did Johnny Cochran say?
First of all, I love his legal team. I think his legal team is amazing. And when Johnny Cochran died, I cried, but, you know.
Like, a two-hour, uh, series this past week about the case and whatnot, and a lot of it dealt with Mark Fuhrman, you know, when, when.
He's a dick, too.
When they caught him lying, and he's on the stand, and they're like, and they asked him, "Did you plant evidence?", and he had to assert the Fifth Amendment and all kinds.
He's a horrible person as well.
So it's twenty, uh, OJ was going down the four oh five, what, on the sixteenth, right? So it's tomorrow, is that right? Because he, they found the call on the thirteenth. So I, I think it's tomorrow. It was game four of the NBA Finals. I remember that. So I'm sort of obsessed with this, like.
Me too.
Do you think he was guilty?
Yeah. Oh, of course, yeah. I mean, it's, it's not about guilt, though. It's about the way that our society reflected that crime and how it was portrayed in the white community and the black community. And as someone who grew up, like, in mostly Caucasian areas, when I saw people in, like, they would have those videos of people, like, cheering at, like, high schools that were majority African-American after the verdict came down, and I'm like, why are they cheering? And, and I think that it showed the divide in America, at least to me.
Yeah, it was a Clinton speech was about, after, after the verdict.
I remember we watched.
Yeah, I've known you for twenty years. I've known you for twenty years. I've never known that we share an affection. So Marsha Clark, I follow her on Instagram. It's, she comments on my stuff, and I get really excited. But I think she's amazing. I really do think she's an amazing person.
But there's different ways you, you can interpret that cheering, okay?
No, I know, I, I, I know.
Absolutely, that's the point.
That somebody got away with murder. They're happy that someone, at least one black man in this country, was not pres, was not just presumed guilty, even if he was guilty, that one black guy could beat the system. And I think that that is why people were cheering. They weren't cheering because they thought someone was getting, they, they were, yes, that person was getting away with murder, but it was more reflective of the justice system.
Right. And inequalities, the structural and racial inequalities of our country during the time.
Have y'all heard the serial killer, the, the.
I'm sorry, what?
There's a theory that a serial killer did it that has a Tampa Bay connection to it.
There is, but if you talk to, if you read some of the evidence that was not admitted into trial, like, um, you know, he cut out her implants. And apparently, he was always really upset with the way her implants looked. So things like that really weren't allowed in trial, but, I mean, according to, if you talk to her sister, which I'm sure Rebecca, you know, I mean, she will tell you a lot of stuff. What I don't understand is what drove him to kill her that day. Did she get on the phone? Was she, like, did they have an argument? Was it?
Do you want my opinion?
Yeah, I don't know, like, what drove him. No, no, he was, he was like, probably.
He was dropping off sunglasses. Well, I mean, yeah, but allegedly dropping off sunglasses from her restaurant, because they were out at, uh, Mezzaluna that night. Um, the, the thing that I, I have, the thing about the OJ trial that I think we know so much more about now is, how much did CTE play into this? I mean, that guy got beat up for three years in college, and all of that NFL career, went running backs to poundings. Like, how much of a role did brain trauma play in him being what he is now and what he probably did, you know, twenty-five years?
I mean, there's a, that's a big discussion right now in a lot of true crime podcasts, like, what drove this person to kind of disregard human life? And, and a lot of, uh, some people that have, you know, committed horrific crimes happen to have played sports, either college or professional sports. I get that, but I don't know, I, what I'm asking is, like, that night where he killed her, what, what drove him to do it that day? Did they ha, it was after their daughter's dance recital, so did they have a fight? Did she say something that set him off? Like, what was the catalyst? Because it seemed like there was no motive for that, you know, just the fact that he's an abusive asshole and has been an abusive asshole for a long time. They had been separated, they'd been divorced. I don't know what, that particular day, why he did it that day. And that has always been a mystery to me.
And, and I don't think we'll ever know the.
No, I don't think we ever will.
But like, the way that that trial, like.
Yeah.
I remember the coroner, Lacshman Sadijir Swaran, testifying for like eight days, and like testifying about every single slice and cut that, that was done to her. And, and the way that it was done in such graphic detail. And then you see that juxtaposed with, and, and this is all after Rodney King, you know, well, those cops got away with it, and white people get away with it all the time. So when a black guy gets away with it, I can understand why, you know, black community felt empowered by that.
But you know, some of the documentaries that they have done, you know, twenty years later, uh, many of the blacks on the jury have great regret.
Yeah.
About that.
Oh, now, oh, yeah, but.
About how they allowed his race to, to influence, uh, the verdict. And I think, you know, there was a moment where, uh, in an effort to, you know, gain his innocence, he fully embraced the African-American community, but he really hadn't previously to that. And he really didn't after he was found not guilty. And, and I think now there is actually, among some African-Americans, it's never monolith, but some African-Americans have a sense of betrayal, uh, uh, about that whole situation.
Sure.
That, that OJ, uh, not only is he guilty, but, uh, they feel used.
Did.
You remember the famous scene? It was, it was recreated, uh, in the trial of OJ Simpson on FX, in where Johnny Cochran walked through his house.
Yeah, I was gonna ask if you watched that.
And there's all these pictures of OJ with these white celebrities, and he says.
Uh-uh.
Get rid of all of, get us some African art.
And put a picture of his mom.
Yeah, and they replaced, you know, all of these pictures of, of white celebrities with African art and pictures of his mother.
And Johnny Cochran.
Jury in.
And Johnny Cochran is just so masterful. And, you know, and the portrayal of him in that mini-series was just so spot-on and so great. And I just think, I mean, Johnny Cochran is just an American legal icon, and I think that he's just a really complicated historical figure. And I, I know that, I'm friends with a lot of attorneys, and when he died, they were all in law school, and I think everybody was crying that day, just because he, he's just a really interesting figure. It represented kind of an end of a, an era in our culture, so.
If you haven't seen Ezra Edelman's seven-hour documentary on, um, it's a thirty-for-thirty.
It's so good. It's really good. It's masterful. It really is.
It won an Oscar for a reason. It's phenomenal, and it, I think, you know, twenty-five, I think that the, the way that our media culture breaks down. The OJ trial changes the way that tabloid media and traditional mainstream news coverage sort of merge.
Absolutely.
Still seeing the results of that today. And, but the, there's like, it's the line of demarcation. It's, it's, you know, B.C. and A.D. It's, and then it's before OJ and after.
Yep, and, and you see so many careers that have been launched, too, because of that trial.
One of the crazy things is, is that trial was shown in schools. Like, can you imagine now, like, if the equivalent?
I used to watch it in, in, at school.
They would show that.
Yeah.
It was like coming home and watching a game every night.
It was, and that, that's what.
It was a sporting event.
That's why it's so, it was covered like a sporting event. It was covered like a soap opera.
Outside the courthouse to, like, protest and counter protest.
Crazy.
Well, what I remember is watching the FX special, uh, with my son, who was born in nineteen ninety-two. And we would watch every episode, and at the end of every episode, he would look at me and say, "Did this really happen?" Like, like, it was just this disbelief, like, like, "They're making this up, right? Like, Dad, this didn't..." I'm like, "No, this, this all happened." And the, the, the criticism of Marsha Clark's hair, the, I mean, all, all of that.
I'm telling you.
Chris Darden, it all happened.
Chris Darden having OJ put the glove on was covered like somebody deciding to go, like, all-out blitz on fourth down in the Super Bowl. I, I mean, that's how.
You're fourth and one, and you screwed it up. Yeah.
Well, why did they let him put the glove on while he was wearing another?
Be cut. Oh, God.
And you just.
Well, Marsha Clark, uh, told Darden.
Not to do that, yeah.
A lot of people.
And, and Johnny, what was portrayed in the FX, uh, recreation, and I'm assuming it's got some truth to it.
Yeah.
They baited him, like, like, they goaded him into doing it.
I would, I mean, if I was on the defense team, I would have done the same thing. I mean, you know, it's just.
You a seller. And just another black man in this illegal system.
I probably wouldn't have done that, but, you know.
You ain't never gonna get OJ guilty. Go ahead, go ahead, put the glove on.
And if you watch the video of him doing that, he's making faces where, you know, he's trying to, you know, get it on, and he's kind of gyrating his body.
He's displaying the same bad acting skills that he displayed in the Naked Gun movies.
And people bought it, though.
It was, uh, uh, you look back at it now, and it just, it changed the way.[1623.03]